Called the regular meeting of the Pleasant Ridge City Commission to order. May we stand for the pleasure of allegiance? Flags keep moving on there.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Budnick?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Commissioner Wall?
Here.
Mayor Metzger?
Here. Okay, first item is public discussion items not on the agenda. Who would like to start first? I'd really like to have Ferndale High School. Yeah, yeah.
May we?
Yes, please, please. After watching the performance before.
Oh, nice.
So, my name is Melissa Smith-Mower. I have the great pleasure of being the head of the theater department at Ferndale High School. And we are currently in rehearsal for our production of She Loves Me, a lovely little tale. And you may not recognize the title, but you might recognize the story. If you happen to be a Jimmy Stewart fan, you might have seen The Shop Around the Corner. Or maybe you're a Tom Hanks, Meg Ryan fan, and you've seen You've Got Me.
Right.
That is the story that we are telling, set to music by Jerry Boggs. It's wonderful, originally staged by, oh my gosh, this is what just went right out of my head. I'll come back.
Somebody did it.
Um, yes, it's terrible, like Broadway great. At any rate, so we're here to play a few songs for you. And I just want to let you know that our performances begin on Saturday, March 21st. We run two weekends. We are Saturday and Sunday, the first weekend, and we are Friday, Saturday, Sunday of the second weekend. And we have a delightful cast of characters here for you. So I'll do my very best to introduce you. You'll be hearing first from Amalia, played by Jessica Decker. And following that, we will have Elliot Reed, who is playing Cephus, Arpad Cephus.
Laslo Cephus.
Yes. Not Arpad Cephus, excuse me. Arpad Laslo, sorry. And then we have Kevin Link, who will be playing Arpad. And then we will have George Vander Vennet, who is playing George. That's convenient and helpful. And we have John Lovellon, who is playing Mr. Kodai. And finally, we have Zoe Butters, who is playing Ms. Ritter. So they are going to entertain you for a few moments. And we are going to leave posters and flyers. Please feel free to take them with you and help us publishize the show. It's a wonderful show, great date night show. Okay? Sweet, fun, entertaining, and without further ado.
I like it.
Yeah.
We'll let it go.
Cool.
Go Amalia.
It's the way it always is, isn't it?
I don't know his name or what he looks like, but I have a much more certain guide. I can tell exactly what he looks like inside. When I undertook this correspondence, little did I know I'd grow so fond. Little did I know our views would so correspond. I know.
So call me fool, that's all right with me. Here's my rule, never disagree. Where's my pride, swallowed long ago, deep inside where it doesn't show? Just maintain a true perspective and make sure you're well supplied with stomach pills. Let me put it bluntly, I'm a... Let me put it bluntly, I'm a coward with a wife and children to support. Actually, my creed is short and simple, five essential words, George. Do not lose your job. Although it's something you would never thought about, Mr. Marichek, try me. You need a man who knows the business inside out, Mr. Marichek, try me. You need help or I'd never spoken. And why break someone in when I'm already broken? This emergency, I wouldn't let you down, Mr. Marichek, try me. Oh, I can see by the uncertain way you frown that you've asked yourself, why me? For first-class clerking and conscientious working, Mr. Marichek, why not try me? My teeth ache from the urge to touch her. I'm speechless or I mustn't tell her. It's wrong now, but it won't be long now before my love discovers that she and I are lovers. Imagine how surprised she's bound to be. She loves me. She loves me.
You know, when this dear, sweet, respectful gentleman said to me next, he said he could solve this problem of mine. I said, how? He said, if I'd like, he'd willingly read to me some of his favorite things. I said, when? He said, now. His novel approach seemed highly suspicious and possibly dangerous, too. I told myself, wait, think, dare you go up to his flat? What happens if things go wrong? It's obvious he's quite strong. He read to me all night long, now how about that?
I don't know. Your guess is as good as mine, John, let's see.
Though I hate leaving you hate, leaving your warm intimate club. It's a small pleasure, but all treasure, each warm intimate snub. It's been grand, let me say, and let me say au revoir, not goodbye. For it's grand knowing you'll all be working for your friend, Kodai.
So thank you very much for your time. And I also do want to just thank, this is Kim Schroder, who is our music director and a wonderful partner in crime in this endeavor. So thank you so much to her and to all of you for taking the time to have us. And we'd like a quick picture, if we could.
Yes.
Oh, sure.
We love those.
Thank you for coming.
I don't know how we can get the pictures, because we have some tall people. I'll stand up here.
Yeah, can we go around, maybe? Maybe we should just go around?
Yeah.
Come back, uh, come up here with us?
Can we get by?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, come join us.
I can do it.
No problem.
It's really good. What a fun surprise.
All right, ready? Can I see all the faces? I think I can, Amanda. Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Guys, thank you. Guys, I can't wait to see the show.
How do you get? Yeah, she gets tickets. Do you know?
Well, you can buy them at the door.
Just at the door?
And soon we will, all the students will have to get to sell.
Okay.
Can you buy them online?
I think we might have them online, and also we'll have lawn signs if you guys need them.
Sure. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Indeed.
We love lawn signs.
I could do that.
Who doesn't want a lawn sign?
This was the first time a lawn's got to see it, too.
Oh, very cool.
Cause you can.
It's totally cute. Wait, the happy way to start.
Motion, yeah. That's my first motion.
We should do a musical.
I'm into that.
Of course, yes, yes.
And then Brett can design it.
What? What am I designing?
Oh, you're designing our ad? Okay.
All right.
Right, that's, that's gonna be a hard act to follow, but Ted can do it.
You're gonna get a top pick or something?
Ted, can you sing about recycling? I'd be thrilled by that.
I think I will say something about that.
What, can you sing it?
Well, my name's Ted Zachary, I'm from the sixty-eight Devonshire. And I'm on the environmental committee. And I'll tell you what I'm working on right now.
Cool.
Okay, part of it is real good.
I'm sure all.
So this guy does visual effects.
Okay, Earth Day is coming up, April twenty-second. And I'm working with Shawnee to see if she could have the movie Game Changers displayed there so that people who don't have Netflix could go over there to Four Ridge with popcorn and have a viewing of the Game Changers.
Ted, do you know what would be cute, too?
Pardon me?
If we showed Wally for kids.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah?
Yeah, it's about recycling, it's about like the earth.
That's a good one, too. Okay, that's, so I'm working with Shawnee on that one. My second part that I'm working on is about fireworks for the Fourth of July. And people say, oh, good, fireworks. But there's a lot of bad things about the fireworks. And lately, I've been thinking, where are these fireworks manufactured? So I'm contacting the city of Huntington Woods, trying to find out some information. I'll pass along to you. And I don't know what to do. My viewpoint is, well, do we really need pollution? Danger to your health and everything else like that. Sure, it looks pretty, but it's an awfully hard thing to, to push against. But, but if there's a lot of people who voice it, or nobody shows up, something would happen. I quoted, last time I was over here, I quoted a famous photographer, now is the time for change. Anyway, okay. For my visual aid, this is the third part. This is my visual aid. We're retired, and we don't, we're not always home. We hardly have any trash. And so I'm gonna put a little tiny bag like this in the garbage can. And this huge truck comes over there and picks up this li- little tiny bag of debris. So what I'm working on is finding out if neighbors would be acceptable, a couple aesthetic with, hey, can I put my little bag in your trash can? And theoretically, and I think actually, there'll be less gas used, less breaks, and soccer would be happy. Tringali will be happy. And somebody mentioned about vegans. There is a vegan bash coming up this Thursday at the farmer's market. I'll be there. My first time over there, I heard it's popular. And speaking of vegan, you know that vegan, no meat, right? This is my finale. Ready for this?
Okay.
If you've got a salad bowl, and you decide, you got a vegan salad, okay? And is it still vegan if you put chickpeas in there? Oh, very good. I rest my, my humor. Any questions? Okay.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you very much.
Next, please.
Hello, my name is Kristy Stoll. I've been a resident of Pleasant Ridge since nineteen ninety-seven. I live on Cambridge. And I'm so happy that my husband and I found this community. And equally as happy that my, my children are enrolled, or were enrolled, for one of them, in Ferndale Public Schools. My oldest is actually, he went K through twelve in Ferndale. He's now flourishing at U of M. And I also have an eighth grader and a third grader. And so I'm here tonight to talk about the bond. And I know we have a lot of support, but I just want to, you know, kind of put a little bit more out there. Because, you know, in a landlocked district with very old buildings, many old buildings, we can't just find a big open field and build new state-of-the-art buildings like some of our neighbors to the north or west can. So a lot of what the bond covers isn't super glamorous. We've got roofs and HVAC systems. I'm sure Jamie can tell us more about those. Parking lot repairs, water systems, electrical upgrades, a lot of the stuff that we all have to do as homeowners in Pleasant Ridge with our older homes, just on a much larger scale. There are security upgrades, like secure entryways at all of our buildings, that sadly are needed in this day and age. And I think give a certain level of security to parents or grandparents who are sending their kids off to school every day. And there are some exciting plans that are in, in the plan, like reimagining what classrooms look like. So kids no longer sit in a row of desks with a teacher at the front of the room, going on and on about punctuation and sentence diagramming, much to my chagrin, but anyway. People who know me know I have issues. But because today's learning is flexible, it involves group projects and collaboration, it encourages creativity and multicultural learning, it incorporates technology and movement. So classrooms need to be physically bigger. And the furniture needs to be flexible and movable, and that's part of the plan. And like all of you, I wear a lot of different hats in the district and around town, or t-shirts, which I brought some. I took Ted's example and brought some visual aids. So I, based on my kids' various interests, I'm always doing something else. I'm a band mom. I'm a theater mom, my kid's in that musical that's coming up. I'm a tennis mom, I'm a robotics mom. And much to my husband's dismay, I am a Girl Scout cookie mom. So if you need anything, I can hook you up, okay? That's all I'm saying. But, so I'm really excited about a lot of the things that are coming with this bond proposal. Updates to the athletic fields, a new band room, new instruments, et cetera. So there's lots of things that my kids are involved with, so that we will, we will benefit from. But I have to say, I'm probably the most geeked about this one thing. So I wear this shirt pretty much year-round, robotics mom, okay? And people around town know me as the robotics mom, or at least around the school district. And so we have on the, on the bond proposal, a lot of things that have to do with robotics and STEAM. And it's important to me because in addition to wearing the shirt, it's because I've helped start our Lego League teams, our junior Lego League teams, our First Tech Challenge teams at the middle school. So I'm constantly involved with that. And our robotics room right now at the high school for our MP team, which is a very successful team, we've gone to Worlds like the past five years or something like that. They, they currently work in the old shop room. It works, but it's also a band storage room, a band practice room, a dumping ground for all kinds of stuff. And it's very outdated. So to have something new and fresh and that will work with them so they can grow their team and continue their success, because robotics obviously is a very big thing coming forward. And we also, in the bond proposal, have a STEAM room and kind of robotics lab at the upper elementary, which I'm super happy about, even though my kids will never benefit from it, the future learners will. So with all that, I just hope that, I appreciate your time, thank you. And please vote yes on March tenth.
Chrissy, I, I just thought maybe you should explain STEAM room?
Oh, I'm sorry, STEAM, yes.
No, just, just because.
It's like a sauna, yes.
You're not just going for a STEAM, right?
STEAM is science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. And you've heard STEM, but they added A, which is, for those who don't know, A because of the arts, obviously. And arts are very important at Ferndale. So yes, not a STEAM room. Yes, for the moms, you know, for us moms, we're gonna go to the STEAM room, yes. No, so.
That's at upper, that's actually gonna be an addition.
Yes, it is, it is.
It's gonna be a brand-new space for that.
Yes, standalone space, which I run one of the robotics teams at the elementary and the middle school. But at the elementary, we have this tiny little closet, and we have these tables and these bins of Legos. And I cannot tell you how many times I've thought I was locked in the closet, you know, trying to get the tables out, trying to get the bins out. So it'll be so nice to actually have a space where the kids can go and regularly learn without having to spend thirty to forty minutes cleaning up and setting up just to make it happen in the art room or the cafeteria or somewhere like that, so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For a visual, you could've done the robot dance, that would've been kinda.
Your kind of help is not, no?
Hi, my name is Danya Bazey, I'm the superintendent at Ferndale Public Schools. Kristy did a fantastic job at explaining all the benefits to the bond. We're, we're getting nearer to the, the date of March tenth. One thing that I want to emphasize is that Kristy, along with many other volunteers, have worked on the bond committee. So I want to reiterate that this wasn't created in isolation, but rather with, you know, community input and buy-in and voice. And so we hope that this bond, the vote, will show reflection that the school district took the time and the energy to make sure it was reflective of the needs of the community, so.
And we'll be taking that also when we get into the design phase, too. There'll be a lot of community input.
So, yeah, exactly, a lot of people have discussed, well, a new elementary, is it designed? And no, generally that would take place after the bond vote. So again, community input to keep the character of, you know, Ferndale Public Schools. The community will certainly have a lot of input and buy-in. Just as a reminder, there's two proposals on the ballot. There's the Headley override, which is the non-homestead renewal. And that is due to Proposal A. So if you Google Proposal A and non-homestead, it'll give you a good understanding of why we, schools have to go and do that. So it's not for additional mills, it's basically a renewal that allows us to collect our per pupil foundational allowance, AKA how much money we get per student, to keep that funding as is. So the, the law requires us to, if, if the school district is going to fall under eighteen mills, to go out and get that extension. If we fall below the eighteen mills, then we don't maintain our current funding model. So that only affects business and non-homestead. And then there's the bond proposal that has a no projected tax increase that is a three-series bond, and all the amenities that, that Kristy explained are, you know, the same thing I would be sharing. Jamie gets really excited about the bond, so I just want to make sure he has the opportunity to share.
Jamie get excited.
I always get excited about pipes and roofs and everything else. But like Danya said, this is a three-series bond, we talked about this before. It'll generate a hundred and twenty-five billion dollars, so the first phase is fifty-three million dollars. And we're going to be investing in a brand-new elementary school. We're going to retire Roosevelt as an elementary school, and we're going to be renovating that building and getting it ready to serve the CASA students. So we're pretty excited about that. And they are, too. CASA, they've reviewed, they viewed that building, and they're really excited about it. That's gonna be their new home. I think we talked about it last time, but the new elementary is planned for the current CASA site. We've been in discussions with the city of Oak Park, and we're actually gonna be purchasing that Jackson Park. And once that goes through, the plan then would be to build that new elementary school on the south side of that property. When it's done, the goal would be then to knock down CASA, make that the playground and the parking lot. And away we go. We do have a lot of exciting proposals in this bond. I mean, we can, I can answer questions if you've got specifics. But as, one of the things that was mentioned, we talked about a new band room. It's not just gonna be a new band room, we're gonna make a band room that's gonna be big enough to house the Winter Guard. So if you can imagine, that's nearly a hundred foot by a hundred foot. It's gonna be one of the largest band rooms in the state of Michigan.
That's great.
To accommodate that, because we are an art school, and we're, we have a lot of programs in, in this bond that's gonna really help our arts program. It's from the renovation to our auditorium, adding scene shops in the back of the auditorium, adding green rooms, building out the robotics area, renovating all the music rooms. So we really put a concentration on what we feel is important to the community. And, you know, that's, we put a lot of thought into the design.
That's cool.
Mm-hmm.
I, I did want to commend you on the, the, what you sent out in the mail, the folder.
Yeah.
I thought it was really well done.
Yes.
Very.
Yes.
Very colorful, very explanatory.
Bill, Bill Good, our, our marketing person handles a lot of that media. But we've also been doing door-to-door for the last, what, four or five Saturdays in a row, and for the next couple of weeks, trying to get the word out there. And we've received a lot of positive input from, from most residents. Everybody's pretty excited about it, and so are we. What date is the next informational session?
We have one this Thursday at the TCEC, the Tri-County Educational Center that's in the township of Royal Oak. That'll be at six-thirty PM.
Okay.
And we have one more after that.
Yeah.
I forget where.
Yeah, it's on our counters. That's right.
Refer to the website.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's, and that's, that's a good point. We, we have all the information about the bond and all the projects on FerndaleForward.com. Exactly. Mm-hmm. That's a great website that Bill set up, so.
Very easy to navigate.
Yeah. Any specific questions? You want to talk about pipes, roofs, anything?
I know you'd love to.
I would love to. I could talk about that for hours. And I have, at length.
I don't think we're gonna talk about pipes anymore.
Usually they give me the hook or the gong, and they pull me offstage when I'm talking about that.
Academy Awards.
All right, thank you.
Thanks again, thank you so much.
If you don't mind, these are informational only, can we leave these?
Yes, please.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, put them on, right on the counter there. Perfect. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will move into governmental reports, and now, now we'll duke it out in the back to go see who goes first.
Hi, Mary Commissioners.
Hi.
Just a couple announcements. We finally got a new fire marshal at the fire department. It's Fire Marshal Dennis Barr. Prior to that, he was sergeant for about a year. He's been on the department twenty years, and he has twenty-six years of experience in the fire service. He's got a lot of knowledge in hazardous materials. We did have a hazmat incident over in the rail yard a couple of weeks ago. He was in charge of that scene, and it called out an Oakway response, and everything was taken care of. There was fifty-two thousand pounds of product that was tipped over on a semi. None of it leaked, they just had a couple gallons of diesel. We had to get two massive tow trucks out to tip it over and take care of it. But it was scary, it was really scary, and I was like, man, I don't want to be here. But everything was mitigated, and everything was taken care of. Dennis will be around, I think I introduced him to Jim and Amy the other day, and some other people around town. And Chief Noack knows him pretty well. So he's a real friendly guy, he's a big guy with red hair, we call him Big Red, so don't be afraid to say that to him. You'll, you'll make his face turn redder than mine gets when I come here. We had a couple fires in the last month. One was in Royal Oak Township, that's in our service area, and that involved the production of hash oil. It was in a rental home. I don't think the landlord knew what they were doing in there. These gentlemen were from Massachusetts, passing through on their way out west, working for someone else with deeper pockets. They didn't call the fire, and the neighbors did. They were trying to put it out themselves, so it could've got a lot worse. So just, you know, if you, if you, that, that kind of stuff happens everywhere. So just be aware of your surroundings and your neighbors. See anything funny, you might want to just report it to the authorities, and they'll take a look at it and stuff. Nobody got hurt, but it was probably a twenty-five thousand dollars in damage. And I don't know if that landlord's gonna be insured or not, because of who he rented it to and what happened. You know, that, that stuff I don't know, but I'm assuming he's gonna have trouble making a claim. The other fire was at Clean Plates over there on one forty-nine West Nine Mile. It's a place that, like, they make food, and if you're in a hurry, you can order it and get it to go. That looked like an accidental fire, but it was well over a hundred thousand dollars in damage. Nobody was hurt, it was put out rather quickly, but the smoke, smoke damage was intense. That happened about midnight two weeks. That happened about midnight two weeks ago. We, not to be a downer, but the state of Michigan right now, last year we did great on improving our, on lowering our fatalities across the state of Michigan, house fires. This year, after the state fire marshal, who's doing a great job, he got a grant for smoke alarms. Ferndale's on that list as well, but we're on a holding pattern because of all the other communities got them first. But we have smoke alarms. If no one can afford them, we'll install them for them at no charge. We just want information so we can load it into the database to get more grant money through the state. But this year so far, since January first, we're hitting thirty fatalities across the state of Michigan. That's, that's terrible. So most homes don't have them, I don't know what the deal is. The last six house fires that I've been to, one person had two smoke alarms, and that was it. And you'll see them, they're taken off, people take them off, whatever. You'll see the ring up there, the bracket, and it's, it just breaks my heart, and I don't wanna see a fatality in any of our communities, I just, I don't wanna see that. So I'm just encouraging people to check your smoke alarms. If you can't afford them, or if you don't wanna go buy them, give us a call, at our non-emergent number, or go online, and we will set up a time. I just set up a time today with someone in Pleasant Ridge. I'm gonna go out there next week and install eight. That's, I'd rather do it tomorrow, but she didn't have time until next week. So we'll go out there, we don't care if your house is clean or messy, we'll go out there. We'll clean our mess up after, we just wanna make sure people are well-protected, and we'll give a little brochure with, you know, some safety tips.
Can I ask a question? Do you do the carbon monoxide as well?
I can, but I gotta find the funding for that.
Okay.
So I'm gonna reach out to, like, our Rotary Club, and then I'm gonna try and find that in our budget, and I might have a little bit of money to do that, but I, what I'm getting at is, I wanna do that, and I wanna encourage people to buy fire extinguishers.
Yes.
And it's kinda over the top, but out of the fourteen thousand homes they installed smoke alarms in across the state, four houses were fully covered. That's, that's terrible.
It's terrible.
You know, they, they're looking at smoke alarms, carbon monoxide, and fire extinguishers.
Well, can I ask a question, too, because somebody brought this to my attention? Aren't a lot of the, the fire alarms, they have the carbon monoxide attached?
You can get those.
But isn't it not that great, because the carbon monoxide doesn't usually start below, like, lower level?
No, carbon monoxide's gonna go anywhere.
So it doesn't matter if it's attached, it's just as good?
Yeah, they wouldn't sell it if you, if it didn't work that way. We just tell people to put one on each level of their home.
Okay.
Um, I'm not promoting Costco, I love Costco. But when I go there, I bought this carbon monoxide detector, they're usually on sale a couple of times a year. You can put it on your table, you don't have to plug it in the wall or nothing, it tells you the temperature in your room. You can take it in your bedroom, you can take it in your basement, whatever. I just bought that when it was really convenient, instead of plugging it in. Those ones always seem to get that chirp.
Yep.
Because the battery dies, you gotta back up.
It does start chirping.
Yeah, so the communications department over in Ferndale City Hall is making a public service announcement for me, and they're trying to roll it out this week, if not next week, it'll be on all the social medias. They're, you know, we're big into digital, like, recycling and stuff, so a lot of that stuff will be on social media, Twitter, Facebook, and on the website. If you guys are wanting to share it on your website, I can probably make that happen. They were talking about doing a video, and it's gonna include placement of smoke alarms. You should check them once a month, not twice a year, change the battery, replace the whole unit after ten years. If you open up your detector or your alarm, it's usually got a little date inside there, you can recycle them. You know, soccer takes them, and stuff like that, okay? So I just want everyone to be safe and pass it along to your friends and neighbors. It's really important to everybody, all the communities.
What is the best type of fire extinguisher for people to have at a home?
So, I don't wanna get, like, sued or nothing, you know?
Right.
What do you mean, like, I don't wanna promote one brand or the other, is that what you're saying, or?
Because I know there are, like, the cans now that are like a spray thing.
I'm not big on those, I'm not big on those. You see those in some of the apartments we inspect.
It's like user-friendly, because you sort of think from the perspective of, we're not really gonna be that well-trained with them.
Yeah, and we'll give classes, I give a lot of businesses around town, we'll get sixty, seventy people. They just provide the old extinguishers, we got something we let on fire, and they put it out. And also, for the environment, to protect the environment, I'm trying to write a grant through FEMA to get this electronic, it feels like a real extinguisher, it shakes and everything, makes a noise, and you hit a target, and it's flames, and you can build the flames with these boxes and walls. It's a lot of money, so I wanna try and get that through risk management, you know, our insurance and stuff like that. And there, there's a good chance we'll get that. But I would say, some people buy those little cans. You can buy them, but I, I have a five-pound ABC extinguisher. Did you say ABC, Jim? Someone over here said ABC, oh, okay. Five-pound ABC, you can get a ten, but five's easy to handle. If you get an extinguisher at any of the big-box stores or Ace, I wouldn't, I would steer away from, so the extinguisher's red, the shell, the neck, and then you have the nozzle and the handle. The neck, if you buy the plastic one, you can't get those recharged or checked. So we make all the businesses get them checked every year, once a year, and they gotta be tagged. If you buy one with an aluminum neck, they can discharge it and unscrew it and change the powder when they have to and everything after six years. There's a whole bunch of different things you have to do, but I would steer clear of the plastic-neck one and get a metal neck, which aluminum usually is what it is. And a five-pound ABC is a great extinguisher to have.
I gotta check my neck.
Yeah, and I don't wanna take up all your time, but they're recommending now, have one in your garage. I have a wood shop in my garage, there's an extinguisher. Have one in your bedroom, like, the adult bedroom? Because most of the fires are starting at night, between six P.M. and six A.M., people are stuck in their bedrooms. Not saying you gotta fight your way out, always have two ways out, but if, if there's a, say you left a candle on or something in the bedroom, or in the bathroom, you might be able to extinguish that pretty quick. You know, so it's just, and if anybody wants that training, we'll set that up. We're all about community outreach and working with guys. And it takes an hour of your time to come out there, get a little twenty-minute spiel from myself or Dennis, and then you'll go up there and demonstrate how to use an extinguisher. All right, I'd really like some participation, so.
Excellent.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Getting good, isn't it?
Good evening, welcome, welcome back, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
To touch, I'll skip to the end of what I had to touch back on what Chief Jack said about the fire extinguisher and stuff. We're planning a safety day on Thursday, May seventh, which the fire department, the police department are participating in at the rec center. There's some info in the ridger, but we'll talk about it more as we get closer, but I just wanted to throw it out there today. But many of these things can probably be added on to what we talked about, because there's gonna be, like, car seat safety, the fire department has certified, it's a really intense, expensive school to go, we don't have anybody here, but they volunteered to do that. So teach parents, I mean, how to safely and correctly put in car seats and everything with all, everything that's going on with a lot of the manufacturers and stuff. Most of them are put in wrong. So that's gonna be addressed on that day. Bicycle safety for children, there's gonna be, like, a little course and everything that they can do and everything, and we can do licensing and stuff. There's gonna be railroad safety presented for tracks, since we have railroad in town and stuff, and that's gonna include then whatever the fire department wants to add and put onto that. So that's Thursday, May seventh, I think it's six to eight P.M. But don't hold me to it, it is, okay. Good, the brain still works. Now I'll go back to beginning. I was gonna start mine with some show tunes from, like, South Pacific, West Side Story, Oklahoma, but most people wouldn't even know what those were. Couple, Mr. Need might know. The youngsters wouldn't have known. I could do some West Side Story, they might know that, but kudos to them, that's very hard to do, to come up in front of a crowd that you don't know and, and do that. So that, they, I congratulate them all, it's a great job. And it looks entertaining, I encourage everybody to probably go to that, it looks like they're doing a good job. IRS scams are up, it's the season. File early if you can, so you don't get somebody else's false file on you, and it's really hard to correct that, once it's filed, your return is filed already, it's a nightmare. So encourage people to file early. Again, they don't call you and ask for money, they don't ask for gift cards. We're seeing that a lot. We've had several residents with phone calls saying the other scam is a loved one or a grandchild is in jail, and they need money, and they're crying, and these people feel like, it sounds just like my grandson or granddaughter. And some people were this close to sending money, like fifteen, seventeen thousand dollars in town. And it's happening everywhere, but it's happening here, too, so. Call the, hang up, call the police department, call the loved ones, make sure it's them, try not to fall for that, but they're, they're preying on mostly elderly people and tugging at their heartstrings. Trying to read my own writing. I touched on that one. Oh, package thieves, it's not happening here, but the new thing that we talked about earlier, they're leaving the package and removing the contents, and then sealing the, sealing the package back up. So it appears your package is delivered, and it's empty, there were several today. Somebody's blender got taken in, what, Royal Oak or whatever, Royal Oak, some woman got an empty box, not a blender. So that's the new one. So if you can, I, I offered it before, I didn't get any feedback, so you can get it delivered here and pick it up later, or have it to the back of your house or your neighbors. I didn't get any negative feedback. I'm getting the, I'm getting the eye, though, right now, so I'm gonna end at that. So that's all I have, unless somebody has any questions.
Thank you.
The fire department does not ask residents for money. I get texts from people from the east coast all the time, I don't know if that's a scam, but I turn to the police department. They don't ask any people for money.
Good, good for next time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. We'll move on to the city commission liaison reports, starting with Commissioner Budnick, Ferndale Public Schools.
Well, it was great to have Donnie, Jamie, and Christie, I think they covered a ton with the bond, and that is the, the huge news. And they did touch on this, this is a ton of info for, everyone should've gotten or received one. And it really just shows all the highlights and goes into depth, all about the bond, and, once again, a lot of visibility there, so. Not too much new, but that was great to hear and great to have them here. A few items of note, February twenty-sixth, that UHS is Black Excellence Celebration. So it's their first annual celebration at University High School. That'll be on a Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, from five to seven. The evening will feature student and community exhibits, a special dance performance, and a keynote address from UHS alumnus Joe Robinson. Dinner and refreshments, always a good thing, will be served. And this event is brought to you by the UHS Student Council, so all are welcome. And two others, there is a Special Education Resource Fair. Ferndale Schools will be hosting a resource fair for parents/families of students with developmental disabilities and other special needs on Wednesday, March eleventh, from five-thirty to eight. That'll be at Ferndale High. And last, there's a WSU Engineering Fair. So the Society of Women Engineers at Wayne State is hosting an event on Saturday, the twenty-second of February. Perfect opportunity for high school students to explore engineering majors offered at Wayne. So everything ranging from biomedic, biomedical, way above my head, to mechanical engineering. So great opportunity for those kids.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Perry, Planning DDA.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission and DDA met on Monday, January twenty-seventh. We, they did a lot of their organizational things. They, you know, they set up their committees and their chairpeople, and their chairman, Tom Troyer, is here tonight with us. They figured out their budget committee and sort of talked about that the budget is continuing on the same track, because they did some good planning in the past, and they have some future projects about the Woodward revitalization for the east side of Woodward. And then they also, just, they talked, sort of brainstormed about other future projects that they may wanna do and everything, too. And, but it was a, a good productive meeting. And then their next meeting will come up in, in a couple months. So I'll let you know at the next meeting, it's April?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, thank you. So it'll be Monday, April twenty-seventh. But it was a, it was a very interesting meeting, and then, you know, later on tonight, we'll be talking about a new commissioner who will be joining the committee. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Scott, Historical Commission.
Uh, yes, thank you. The Historical Commission did not have a meeting in February, they did have a workshop to help organize things in the museum, and I do recommend everyone to take an opportunity to visit the museum on the days that it's open. A lot of content comes into the museum from people in the community that find things in their homes or belong to relatives, and so the Historical Commission is going through the process of organizing it all, cataloging it all, and it's, it's just a treat to go in and see what's there. The only other thing I'll mention is that the, there, there's a committee that's actively working on redoing the Pleasant Ridge Then and Now book. I'm editing that book right now, and I have to tell you, I'm learning a lot of information about, just to think about Detroit with five hundred people, you know, that's how big it was in the eighteen twenties.
Geez.
Or what was happening on that triangle of land between Woodward and Maine in the late eighteen hundreds. All of that information is just really interesting to read. The committee, which is made up of Historical Commission members and other members of our community, have found some really cool information. We're getting close to being finished with the writing. We may actually do another call-out for some pictures and things, although we have a lot of information to add, and I think people are going to enjoy it when it's all done. We'll probably have that out for people to purchase.
That's cool.
You know, towards the, you know, middle to the third part of the year.
Cool. That's exciting.
Uh, next meeting, I think, is March fourth, and that's it.
You're gonna do an online version?
Uh, we're, we're trying to figure out, I, I think we'll do a book and probably some portion of it online.
I think we're gonna put all of it online, as an interactive book.
Yeah.
And then we'll still do some print copies as well.
And you can update. And you could do an audio version, Brad, you could read that.
You could voiceover.
We'll have to find the James Earl Jones of the neighborhood.
Totally, only if you wear dirt on your outfit.
Then and now on CDs.
That's John Wright's job, yeah.
Twenty-five CDs.
I love it.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you. Commissioner, all recreation commission.
I don't know if you knew, but the Academy Awards are this weekend. Somebody has a special interest over there named Mr. Mayor.
I didn't watch the show.
You didn't even watch it?
I'm not that interested.
He just likes the statistics.
I know, the statistics. So we had, okay, ready for this, one hundred and forty people attend all the, the series of Academy Awards. So it's great, so people really liked it, the feedback was great, hopefully we'll do it again next year, since it was such a hit. And then monthly movie series, Thursday, the twentieth, I'm gonna give a plug for this, because I wanna see it. Mister Rogers, It's a Beautiful Day in the Neighborhood, gonna be shown at twelve, fifteen, and six, free popcorn. Computer classes, March third, fifteen dollars per class, classes are an evening class. Should, it's called, should I click on what? And, or should I click on that? And Google, and all about email. So if you're curious, if you don't know about these things, you should sign up and then come learn. Register for one or all four. Fifty-plus club day trip, March twelfth, the DSO tour, that will be cool, and lunch cost is twelve dollars. Lunch cost is on your own. PR's very own Divas Mani will be our tour guide, so that will be really great, get an inside scoop.
Wow.
Um, isn't that great?
Yeah.
Uh, Community Blood Dr- what'd you say?
That's right. And isn't he the new director of the, one of the foundations for the DSO?
I didn't know that.
He's the new bigwig.
Oh, great, even, I mean, his stock just went up even more, if that's, if that's possible. But it will be great to have an inside view with him, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Community Blood Drive, March eighteenth, one to seven. To register yourself to donate, please visit www.radcrossblood.org or call one-eight-hundred-RAD-CROSS. Okay, this is big, too. Online in-person registration before the PR, the swim team, okay? And the twenty-twenty summer day camp programs, the registration begins March sixteenth. So field trip spots fill up really fast, don't be left behind, is my advice. Applications are due for summer employment by April twelfth, lifeguards, headguards, and camp staff. We did not have a rec meeting, we will have one April twenty-ninth. It's not since...
Go ahead.
Oh, we did have one. I'm lying, sorry, sorry constituents. We did have one at the, what was it, January twenty-ninth?
Life is so busy, you just don't, you know.
Yes, so we had a meeting, it was great, we're gonna have another one in April.
Good, good. Well, while I, while I did not watch the Oscars, I did enjoy analyzing the data, and just to let you know, four people actually got all five.
That's awesome.
Really?
But they were all anonymous, so I can't, the four who got them right know who they are, so.
They just filled it at home.
Four people picked all five pairs.
Oh, there were no winner? No winnings? Nothing to win?
No, we didn't do that.
No prizes?
No, but, but four people who actually picked Parasite, and I think thirteen, thirteen people picked Parasite, so.
Wow.
Um, and four people got the other four.
It's a good movie.
Not bad. Okay, thank you. Moving on. Next item, consent agenda. We only have two items. Is there a motion to accept, approve? Somebody, please?
Mayor, I move the consent agenda be approved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second. Oh, go ahead, Chris. I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Um, any questions, any discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Motion to, yes, motion's approved. Uh, next item, quiet title action regarding parcel number twenty-five dash twenty-seven dash one seventy-eight dash zero thirty in the city of Ferndale. Jim?
Um, Greg Need is gonna do the.
Oh, Greg, alright. Excellent.
I've been here for a while.
I know. This is wonderful.
Um, Greg, actually, since we got the new microphones, if you don't mind, yeah.
Chairs are comfortable, but.
I know. So we have a fairly unique situation where, for reasons that no one can quite understand, the tax records of Oakland County. Show that Pleasant Ridge is the owner of a small parcel of land that's in the city of Ferndale. The parcel is Lot one forty-eight of Sylvan Gardens. It includes the boundary line between Ferndale and Pleasant Ridge, and that's because when the subdivision was platted in around nineteen sixteen. Neither Pleasant Ridge nor Ferndale existed. It was in Royal Oak Township, and then when the city's incorporated, as it turns out, this whole subdivision has the city boundary lines running through them. A, about thirty-nine, the parcel in Pleasant Ridge is about thirty-nine feet wide is the bulk of the parcel. The other eleven feet is in Ferndale. The parcel is under, oh, the Pleasant Ridge parcel is under private ownership, but there is a question as to who owns the little eleven-foot strip in Ferndale. Speculation is there was a tax sale in nineteen forties. I think there was a clerical error there when that property was conveyed. But ever since then, the conveyances have included only the thirty-nine feet in Pleasant Ridge and not the eleven feet in Ferndale. So someone now wants to develop it as residential and put a house on it. I went through the historical records. I could find no instance of any city action on this eleven feet. We don't know how we are reflected on the county's tax rolls as owning it. But it serves no useful purpose, obviously, for us, and it's better, at least Jim and I feel, it's better to get that property into productive use. Without this quiet title action, the property, it can be developed, but the setbacks are going to be, you know, far more restrictive. Uh, so in order to clear all this up, the property owner filed what's called a quiet title action. It's a pretty common circumstance where you have issues with regard to property ownership. Um, you file like a plate in circuit court, and then assuming everybody agrees, a court order is issued, which then confirms that this is one parcel. It can be developed as one parcel. It will remain in, uh, common ownership. So I worked with the property owner's attorney to prepare the draft consent judgment. Um, they are requesting that both Pleasant Ridge and Ferndale approve this. Um, we recommend it be approved. Ferndale has not yet acted on this, but I don't see why they would not. So it's our recommendation that we approve this, and I will certainly answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Greg? That's pretty, pretty clear, I think.
I think so too.
Clear what we need to do.
And there was a question. We would sign the proposed consent judgment to file it in the court, you know, assuming the commission approves it, so.
Thank you.
Okay, well, if there are no questions for Greg, I'm gonna ask if, um, the consent judgment regarding the quiet title is to be approved.
Excuse me? Uh, Mayor, who would be the person that would be authorized? We have a blank there.
Would it be the city attorney?
It would be the city attorney.
Okay.
Because this is litigation, we can sign the legal act, might not be after the city. With your authorization.
Okay. Mayor, I move the consent judgment regarding the quiet title for parcel number twenty-five dash twenty-seven dash one seventy-eight dash zero thirty. Be approved and that the city attorney be authorized to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion is approved. Alright, the next item is junior commission appointments. We have one opening for the Planning Commission Downtown Development Authority. And we have three openings on the Recreation Commission. Um, so I'm gonna ask first for a motion to move the appointment on the Planning D D A.
Your honor, I move that the appointment to the Pleasant Ridge Planning Commission and Downtown Development Authority. Um, of Jay Carroll to a full term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two be approved.
Is there support?
Yes.
Any discussion? Alright, may we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Congratulations, Jay Carroll. Tom will give you a list of things you need to do. Already got the list. What, what? Next item is the Recreation Commission. Is there a motion?
Yes. Your honor, I move that the appointments to the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission of Jill Lambfear and Corey Truesdale for full terms. Terms to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and the appointment of Samantha Sharp to fill a partial term, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one be approved.
So, support?
I second.
Any discussion? Alright, let's have a vote.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion's approved. Congratulations to all three.
Very exciting.
Yep. We had really wonderful applica- applicants this time. Um, showed a lot of interest, you know, a lot of expertise, and, um, we're really happy to see, to actually have people that we could choose from. It was wonderful.
It was very hard to choose.
It was a very hard decision.
So, thank you for those who did not get chosen, and don't give up. Keep, keep applying. Keep your names in the, in the loop. We will be around again. Okay. Next item is city manager's report.
Uh, I don't have much tonight, uh, Mr. Mayor. We have the deadline for the Cooperative Tree, uh, program is this Thursday, so you have two days if you are contemplating, uh, planting a tree in front of your house. Um, also, uh, Oakland County is in, uh, honor of their, uh, bicentennial, the two-hundred-year anniversary of Oakland County this year. Um, they have, uh, they're doing a program where they're offering oak trees. These are saplings. They're, you know, eighteen-inch saplings.
Oh, nice.
And they're making those available. Uh, we applied to get, um, a number of those trees that we can make available to residents to come plant on your property. We'll likely put a couple, you know, put some in our parks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, you know, help, help reforest the city, uh, once more. So we applied for white oaks and burr oaks, which would do well in the soil that we have here. So stay tuned. Uh, we'll push more information out about that. If we get an allocation, how many we have and how residents can get one of those, that'll be free. And we're also planting trees this coming spring. Uh, while we're on the topic, we're doing Millington, uh, Elm Park Avenue, that's between Ridge and Oakdale. And then, uh, Poplar Park are the focus streets for this year. And again, we, we choose those just based on which streets have the least number of trees, relatively speaking. So, um, look for those coming in April or May, and, uh, it'll all be all to the good. Uh, that's all I have. I can answer any questions that any of you may have for me, uh, but other than that.
Anybody got some questions? No.
No. Great, feeling good.
Okay, wow. Thank you, thank you, Jim. Uh, well, let's move on to other business. Is there any other business? Do you wanna talk about elections or anything?
Love to.
I thought you.
I love to!
You never said I love to.
So we have an election in the city of Pleasant Ridge on March tenth. It is the, um, nominating primary for the presidential election. And we also have three proposals. Uh, one is a renewal for the Detroit Institute of the Arts Millage, D I A Millage. And then the two school millages that were discussed earlier this evening. Um, absentee ballot applications are available now. You can get it on the website. You can call me. You can send me an email. I'll get you the application if you're interested. With no reason absentee, anybody can vote absentee, um, and they can receive an application for any and all elections, whether they choose to use it or not. You just have to return it if you wanna use it. Otherwise, show up at the polls. Um, I do not mail a cookie, though.
That's right.
I know there was some question about whether a cookie was mailed out. Uh, there is not a cookie mailed out with absentee ballots, unfortunately. I'm sorry.
Make them show up.
Um, so, the, we are open the Saturday before, which is March seventh. And I'll be here from eight A M. until five P M. that day issuing absentee ballots.
What is it, eight A M.?
Eight A M. to five P M. And then you can also get a ballot on Monday, um, the ninth, however, you can't take it with you. You have to vote it in, in city hall. Um, and then the polls are open from seven A M. to eight P M. That'll be at the community center. There will be cookies. And, uh, with, uh, everyone votes in one precinct now. We did the precinct, um, consolidation.
I came with the bail, I think.
Yes. And you should have received a new voter identification card. That identification card is for your purposes only. That is not something that you would show a poll worker. The day of the election. They're still gonna ask for your driver's license. Um, if you do not have it, you need to sign the affidavit on the back of the application to vote. And we do have electronic poll book running, up and running. We used it for the first time in November, so this'll be our second election. So our election inspectors are super excited. Using those, so, uh, lots of stuff coming up for the elections. If you have any questions, you can give me a call. Um, Shawnee's the deputy clerk. She's pretty well-versed on, on those kind of things. If, if I'm not around, she can answer the questions. Um, and that's about it.
And then our next meeting will be the seventeenth.
Our next meeting is going to be the seventeenth due to the election.
Okay. And Amy, you said that the sample ballots are online?
So the sample ballots are online. They are on the city's website.
Okay.
You just have to click on the one that you wanna take over.
Then I saw these cool sample ballots up, you know, cause there are three different ones?
One for the Republican, uh, nominating, but also has proposals on it. Democratic nominating, which has the proposals, and then one, just a proposal only. If you don't wanna participate in the party primary, you can just get a ballot with just the proposals on it.
Okay. Cool. And then there are two school, two, um.
Two school millages and then one D I A.
Okay.
Renewal.
Alright, and the two don't, aren't separate from each other. I mean, they're not, they don't.
Right.
They are separate.
They are separate. One does not have to pass for the other to be good.
Okay. And, um, cool. So these are up at city hall too, so if you want a copy. Cool. Thank you.
Any other, other?
I have one thing.
Yeah.
Um, the Pleasant Ridge Foundation's having their auction on May, Saturday, May sixteenth. And the tickets are early bird through March thirty-first, forty dollars. PleasantRidgeFoundation.org. So that's a great deal, so.
Cool. So, um, with the auction, I know, you know, people are starting to donate gifts for the auction and everything?
Yes, we're always, the foundation is always looking for gifts. Baskets, black party baskets, a lot of blacks buy, being together and put together baskets, which is wonderful. They really appreciate that. They're always popular.
Which I think Devonshire is getting together again. Rumor is it that we're gonna go back to the Tony's basket?
Oh, I like it.
So Tony's Sport, Sports Bar gift, so.
Do you wanna talk about that? I mean, there's some really cool items that are auctioned off, so go ahead, Ian.
Well, I'll let you talk about the actual items, but we'll do like a good Tony's competition thing for, cause I know it's always. You know, it's a place that's frequented by many Pleasant Ridgeers, so it's a good.
And there was actually a seat auctioned off. There was a plaque, a seat that got auctioned off for, for Tony's, and there was a plaque with your name on it.
Yep.
So there's a lot.
And a pennant.
And a pennant up right now, if you go there.
And a gift certificate.
I mean, so, like, the possibilities are endless, it's about to share. So I encourage you, we, are we all, they're also looking for bottles of wine, cause they do a wall of wine where, you know, you, you spend, I think it's twenty or twenty-five dollars, and there's some like, there are a hundred dollar, a hundred fifty dollar bottles of wine strewn in there, and they bag it up and you pick one. I mean, that's great. If you wanna donate any wine, it's always appreciated. Anything, you really, you know, they appreciate that. It all goes to the community. This year, the two big projects they're funding are the pavilions, the pavilion at the pool, and the pavilion at the park as well. In Gainesboro.
And if you're a member of the foundation and have it renewed, you can actually go to the website and just click the button and pay hours.
Very easy.
Okay.
Very easy to take your money and put it to good, to good work. So, that's all I wanna say.
We just went to the hockey game, which we bid on.
Yes, I.
And I posted it, and I have to tell you, I mean, I have a couple of friends say, well, what did you bid on the thing? And I had to go look back to see, and I told them, and they went, man, it was an awful lot for a hockey game. And I said, you know, we totally forgot how much we spent, cause we had a riot.
It was really great, wasn't it?
It was really good. We were sitting, I mean, I don't know if it's always good. I mean, we were sitting, I mean, Rick.
I saw your pictures.
Lachlan was in the way part of the time. I mean, we were right behind the bench. The, the players' club is fabulous.
So the person.
Fabulous.
The person who donates it.
Jan was geeked. I mean, all the players were marching up and down, back and forth between periods. She's up there like with the rest of the, you know, pushing children out of the way so she can get on.
Pushing children out of the way!
You know, and, you know, and I have to say to anybody, if you're bidding on a thing, I mean, once you get your thing. You're not even gonna, you're, you're never gonna miss this money, and it just got used probably way better than you were gonna use it.
I was so happy to see you got that.
Yeah, it was real fun. It was real fun.
The person, the person who donated works for the L H S and, like, behind the scenes, so that was great.
That's super. Well, yeah, anyway, e- everybody should get involved, because it, it's a loot on, on every level, really.
There's so many, I mean, there's something for everybody, right? There really is. And we have chicken check back this year, too. Excellent.
Never a disappointment.
Never a disappointment.
Any other comments?
I think that was.
Well, then, I get to finish with the census, um, only because, only because that's what I got, right? Um, just, just to let people know again, you'll be hearing more, obviously, but within about a month, you're gonna be getting a notification from the Census Bureau. To, um, respond. You'll be, you'll be able to respond either online, by phone, or filling out a form, and you'll get more, more information ahead. I expect that there will be a lot of misinformation out there on the internet and a lot of ways to try to discourage people to fill out questionnaires. We will also be having, um, an event at Four Ridge, probably sometime, do we have a date? March thirtieth? Okay, so on March thirtieth, we're gonna have a two morning and an evening session, talking about the census, helping people if they wanna fill it out. Um, and just making sure that people get their questions answered. Um, and we wanna make sure that everybody in Pleasant Ridge. We'd like to get at least back up to twenty-five hundred people in this city. Um, so, we want you all to fill out your questionnaire, so. You'll be hearing much more. So, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes!
Yes, there is.
There's a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yes. I like that.
Yes!
Yes.